I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, well, the Commission Secretary note that all members of the Commission are present except for Commissioner Peters. All right, um, I will take action on the minutes as distributed unless there are any amendments or other changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the last meeting as written.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams and a second from the Vice Chair. You've heard the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. All right, public comments, are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment for the Commission on anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Now is your opportunity, um, if you'd like to do so, please fill out a, um, speaker card. Otherwise, okay, moving on, disclosure of ex parte communications.
None here.
Nope, okay, none for me as well. All right then, on to new business, um, case number one-two-dash-three-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, the use permit for an entertainment use community bingo hall. And I will open the public hearing and take the staff's presentation.
Do we have Elmo, please? Mr. Chairman, Commission members, good evening. I'll be, uh, presenting on this, uh, use permit case that is for entertainment use for a community bingo hall at the Australia Shops in Australia Crossing Business Park planned area development. Uh, by way of background, the Rotary Club has been, uh, trying to get into the bingo business, so to speak, for several months now. They had explored a couple of, of other sites, but had failed to come to terms on lease agreements at those locations, uh, even though the license applications for those, uh, locations had been approved by the City Council. So, uh, what they are proposing tonight is to take the existing license that they have approved and transfer it to this location, um, at thirty-six ninety South Australia Parkway. Uh, the property is basically the Australia Shops at the Australia Crossing Business Park, it's at the southwest corner of Elwood and Australia Parkway, uh, there's this small commercial center, uh, that has three buildings developed on it, buildings, uh, one, two, and three, uh, but also has several, uh, vacant pads that are available for future development. This is a copy of the site plan, uh, for the shopping area, you have a copy of that in your packet. The area denoted in red is the portion of Building One that the bingo, uh, operation intends to, uh, occupy. The balance of the building is occupied by Pets Place, and then there are, uh, a couple other businesses in, uh, Building Three, um, a beauty salon and a, uh, a couple of restaurants. The surrounding area is comprised primarily of vacant land, uh, that's designated either, uh, industrial or for commercial use. To the, to the northwest is the location of Sundias Farms, uh, proposed PAD that has yet to be developed. To the west is basically vacant lots that are part of the Australia Crossing Business Park. To the south is a, uh, car wash and auto repair establishment and a couple of other, uh, light industrial uses, and then across the street to the east is the incimate, uh, materials recycling facility, and to the northeast is the Reds Development Complex. You are familiar with the standards for granting a use permit, in this particular case, the reason a use permit is required is because on this PAD, a land use matrix was adopted with the PAD that specified what types of uses could go on which types of lots. The, the lots that are designated as A on this, uh, exhibit are lots that are appropriate for, uh, commercial, primarily commercial and some light industrial uses, the areas in B are more, uh, light industrial, uh, uses. And then, there are some uses even in the land use matrix that require a use permit. In this particular case, an entertainment use, which is the category the bingo establishment falls under, was not listed as a permitted use. The land use matrix, however, does state that any use that is allowed in a C-two, uh, district would, could be considered as a use permit, and so that's why we're processing a use permit for this use tonight. Uh, as I started to mention, you're familiar with the standards for, uh, granting a use permit, needs to demonstrate that it will not be material detrimental to, uh, persons residing or working in the vicinity or adjacent to the property, the neighborhood, or the public welfare, and the proposed use is reasonably compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area. The bingo operation would be a, uh, seven-day-a-week operation with, uh, one event on each day and two events on Saturday and Sunday. Uh, as you may or may not know, bingo, uh, is legal in Arizona when operated, but for recreational purposes or to allow certain types of nonprofit organizations to raise funds to support their activities. That is why the application is being processed by, uh, the Rotary Clubs, they are, they will be the licensed entity for the bingo operation, and, uh, will likely contract the actual operation to a, to a, uh, uh, independent operator, but they would have a presence, uh, on the site, uh, at all times. Uh, one of the issues that, uh, is related, uh, potentially to this site is parking, and parking has been, uh, a concern on the other two sites. Uh, in those cases, they were addressed through a time-of-day parking study that demonstrated that even though the cumulative number of spaces required for each, uh, use on the property, uh, could be, would be sufficient depending on the time of day, in this particular instance, if you add up all the required parking for the existing buildings that are out there, there's more, even with the bingo use, there's more than adequate parking to meet the minimum requirements. We have advised the applicant that, um, recalculation of the required parking would be necessary when, if and when the, uh, other pads, uh, come in for development. But in all likelihood, uh, even if they don't have enough parking at that point in time, they would have the option of preparing a time-of-day parking study to demonstrate the adequacy, uh, of the parking. Uh, the only other item that was identified in relation to this case was a concern raised about noise impacts, uh, due to the airport, and this is more of an instance where the proposed use might be impacted by the airport operations rather than vice versa. Um, the property is within the sixty-decibel contour line for the airport, uh, however, the applicants are well aware of that, and it has been explained to them and stipulated that if airport noise ends up being a problem for them, it'll be to them to take steps to mitigate it, not the other way around. Uh, lastly, the airport also did comment on, uh, concern that if they do any additional work at the site, particularly, uh, raising the height of buildings or using equipment to put, uh, say, air conditioners on the roof of the building, and if they were to use cranes with that, they need to file a notice of proposed construction, which is a Form seventy-four sixty dash one with the FAA to get clearance, uh, before they do that work, uh, but only if that is, uh, anticipated. So, uh, in sum, staff finds that the proposed use is consistent, uh, with the surrounding area, that we haven't, had no response to the public notices published in connection with the request, and that, with that, I'll, uh, we recommend approval subject to the three stipulations on the, uh, face of the, uh, COAC. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks and stand for any questions. There are representatives from the Rotary Club here, Gary McCackran and Vince Evans, uh, and Charlie Miller are all here to answer questions or approach the, uh, Commission as well.
Thank you, Joe, um, any Commission, uh, questions for staff? Commissioner Williams?
Excuse me, uh, Joe, I'm not sure if this is for staff or for the applicant, uh, you know, I know you did not receive any information from property owners, there are some businesses at the site now, did, do they, do the businesses that are in operation there now have any issues with the bingo facility? Do we know?
Chairman Lox, Commissioner Williams, uh, I have not had any direct contact, well, I take that back, I had direct contact with one of the tenants, uh, who expressed a concern but that they may be bothered by the, uh, odor from the incimate, uh, operation, but it wasn't, uh, so much a concern with the bingo operation itself. But I'll let the, uh, I believe the applicant indicated, at least in conversation, that they had approached the other tenants, and I, I'll let them report on that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Um, and, I don't know if, uh, right, if the applicant, Mr. Evans, wants to...
Yeah, my name is Gary McCackran, um, and I'm with the Goodyear White Tanks Rotary Club. Vince and I have made a complete pass on all the tenants out there, from Taste of Italy to, uh, the salon, to Pets, uh, Place, also Christie's just opened up, it's, uh, I think it's Chalata Wine Cafe, I think that's the four of them. They're all very excited to have us because it's going to draw a lot of business to them. The demographic of bingo, we all pretty much know it, everything, we've, we've been working on this, it's two Rotary Clubs, it's the Rotary Club of Buckeye and the Goodyear White Tanks Rotary Club, and, uh, the demographics are, well, there are a lot of salon abilities, okay, a lot of ladies go to it. We've, uh, brought, we brought this up in Pebble Creek a lot, uh, Vince and I both live there, uh, they play bingo there in the Eagles Nest, uh, over there, and we've talked to the lady that's, that runs that for them, they're very excited. There's not a lot of recreation around here, we all know that, we go to a restaurant or else we go to the movie, that's about what we have to do. So, we're very excited, we've followed a model that's been done up in Washington State now for twenty years, it's a Rotary Club that's done that very successfully, and we're very excited. We've also offered a couple nights a week, that the Rotary won't be taking all the proceeds, uh, it's going to also be, uh, nonprofits, uh, such as New Life Center, Southwest Funding Closet, or whatever, that they can come there and we'll run it for them, that we're, we hope to raise a lot of fundraising money for a lot of nonprofits in our community, so, anyway, to answer your question in short, yes, we've talked, we've talked to all of them, and actually, we've had lunch with most of them, so...
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Right, does any member of the Commission have any other questions for the applicant? All right, very well, I will close the public, or is there any member of the public who would like to, uh, speak to this case? All right, then I will close the public hearing and accept Commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept a use permit for entertainment use of the bingo, case number twelve-dash-three-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-two.
Got a motion from Commissioner Miller?
That's a motion. It's been a while since I've been here.
And a second from the Vice Chair. You've heard the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You have recommended case one-two-dash-three-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, be recommended to the full Council.
I'm going to be the first guess, sir.
All right, the next case is case one-two-dash-two-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, a request approval for a PAD amendment. And I will open the public hearing and take staff presentation, take it away, Brett.
Thank you, Chairman Lox, members of the Commission, members of the public. Sunbelt Holdings is requesting that seven acres of property, uh, located at the northwest corner of Charles Boulevard and Saraval Avenue be rezoned from PAD C-two to PAD I-one. And so I put up an aerial photo exhibit for you here, um, as you can see here, just to help you get oriented quickly, Camelback Road is here, Indian School Road here, the three oh three, um, Pebble Creek here, and the, in the Palm Valley Phase Five residential area there. So as you can see here from this aerial photo, um, to the, to the north and, um, west of the subject property, there are undeveloped portions of the PV three oh three area. To the south, there's an undeveloped parcel that's part of the Palm Valley Phase Five, it's a commercial parcel, and then you, you can see where that, uh, Palm Valley Phase Five, where the residential homes are existing there. And now I want to show you a zoning exhibit. The subject property is, is shown kind of crosshatched there in red. So this is the zoning exhibit for the entire PV three oh three area, uh, the area that we, we are, uh, discussing tonight is just that seven acres that's shown crosshatched in red. Um, Sunbelt Holdings is, is requesting this PAD amendment to the PV three oh three PAD in an effort to facilitate the subdivision plating of, uh, the development of about three hundred and seventy acres, and I, I want to show you a draft preliminary plat, and then I'll move back to the zoning exhibit, um, but we're going to, the, the plat that I'm going to show you, uh, really takes in this area here. So this is a draft preliminary subdivision plat, uh, that Sunbelt is, is preparing, and, um, you can see it's between Camelback Road, Indian School Road, and from the west, Loop three oh three to Pebble Creek Parkway. Uh, this subdivision plat will be reviewed with you at a future planning commission meeting, but I wanted to see, show you how they've, they've started to start laying out, uh, the parcels. So back to the zoning exhibit, uh, representatives from Sunbelt Holdings have, uh, reported that this PAD amendment will allow all of the zoning north of Charles Boulevard to be consistent, uh, which would be I-one, and then all of the property to the south of Charles Boulevard would be contiguous with the C-two, um, uh, zoning district designation. And they, they've proposed that this will accommodate the subdivision planning of the parcels in between the three oh three and Saraval Avenue. The applicant has also noted that there's interest in the development of this, this property, uh, by both potential users and by the brokerage community. Uh, staff finds that this minor adjustment of seven acres of light industrial zoning is, is an acceptable land use for the subject property. The proposed use and development plan do appear to be compatible with the surrounding, uh, properties. The subject property is located more than six hundred feet away from the residential property line associated with Palm Valley Phase Five, and, um, a copy of the PAD amendment was sent to Luke Air Force Base for review, uh, no additional comments were submitted from Luke Air Force Base on this application. Regarding the citizen review process, the, in order to accommodate Sunbelt's aggressive times, timeframe, the applicant has requested that we follow the, uh, city's alternative citizen review process. So with that, written notices were sent to all property owners within five hundred feet of the, of the subject property, uh, a notice was placed in the newspaper of this public hearing this evening, and a sign was also posted on the property providing notice of this public hearing. And, uh, we have not received any comments regarding this application. And this essentially concludes the presentation by staff, staff recommends that the application be approved subject to the stipulations outlined in your staff report, and staff is available to answer any questions, also, uh, representatives from Sunbelt Holdings, Troy Mortensen is available for any questions that she might have.
Thank you, Brett, um, does any member of the Commission have a question for staff?
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Yeah, because I just have an informational issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm just curious, you mentioned Luke Air Force Base, just curious, just a quick summary what the city's policy is for development within the ACUs, I mean, it's obviously industrial or commercial type compared to residential, and then with the Air Force, they're fine with, with all those types of development, just as long as it's not residential, or...
Chairman Lox, Commissioner Schlosser, we send anything within proximity to Luke Air Force Base, we send them applications of the, of the requests, uh, they typically get very interested if there's any, any changes related to residential or any, any increases in densities, um, because Charles Boulevard is part of that, uh, high noise level area, and so, uh, they, they typically are very aware of any type of, um, high density residential because they, even though the Palm Valley PAD was approved prior to the graduated density concept that Luke wants everybody to, um, follow, uh, they still want to make sure that, that, uh, there aren't high groups of people in the high noise areas, or that appropriate uses are in, in any of the accident potential zones that are adjacent to the runway.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Brett, just for information, uh, that area to the north and east, uh, Roman numeral four, uh, is, is anything likely to happen to, with those plans in the near future, or is that kind of in limbo?
Chairman Lox, Commissioner Williams, currently, the subdivision plat that, uh, the applicant is working on takes in, uh, phases two and, and a portion of phase three, uh, I'll defer to the applicant to, uh, to respond to, uh, areas in phase four.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Brett, we'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Mortensen.
Chairman Lox and, uh, members of the Commission, my name is Troy Mortensen, I'm with Sunbelt Holdings, uh, sixty-seven twenty North Scottsdale Road, Suite one sixty in Scottsdale, Arizona. Um, Brett did a good job of, of representing, uh, what we're, we're looking to do here, um, this is all in result is, as we're looking to do preliminary plating, um, east of, east of the three oh three now, as we, we have some plats on the west side of the three oh three and have had some, um, some, some sales and some interest, um, Dick's Sporting gets on the other side under construction, and so, um, due to, uh, interest in the area and, and these, these code projects that come up, um, there's an interest, there's a, there's a need for us to get some of these sites, uh, preliminary platted, and to get them, quote, shovel-ready, as these, as these users come into, into town. Um, and so, as we were, we were laying out the roads, um, I can just point here, you can see on the preliminary plat that, that we've submitted to the city, um, we're in our second review set of comments, uh, do you have that? Perfect. And we're looking at extending Charles Boulevard, you can see at the intersection of Charles and Saraval Road, uh, extending Charles Boulevard to the east, or to the west towards the three oh three. Um, with that, it kind of bisected that, that, uh, zoning line and, and kind of isolated the C-two zoning on the other side, on the north side of, uh, the future Charles Boulevard. Um, we've, we've, we've talked to, uh, retail brokers, um, in the, in, in planning this, um, between Indian School and Charles Boulevard on that extension, there's a, there's about a thousand foot of depth, um, which we've been assured, you know, with all the major retailers, uh, big box retailers, a thousand foot depth is, is the correct depth, uh, for uh, these, these large big box retailers to build, and, and, uh, they'll have the right amount of room there. So, um, we wanted to then kind of make the zoning consistent on the north side of Charles Boulevard and eliminate that, that seven acres of C-two zoning as it doesn't really, it's not really sizable enough to do a whole lot right there. Um, also, it, it kind of creates, at that intersection, you end up getting a four-way, uh, intersection there at Charles and, and Saraval, and then also, there's, there's kind of, uh, utilities that kind of meet into that intersection, so it'd be convenient to, to continue Charles on that way, and then continue Saraval from a utility standpoint. Um, so if you have any other, I'll speak real fast, too, about, uh, Commissioner Williams' question on, on, uh, phase four, um, I'm going to go back, go back to this map, the preliminary plat will take us from basically the freeway on the, on the west side going east to the future alignment of Pebble Creek Parkway. So Pebble Creek Parkway kind of comes di- comes through here at a diagonal angle there in the future Pebble Creek Parkway, so we'll be, uh, planning up to that point, and that does take in a, a portion of phase, uh, four, um, and so we're, you know, this, this initial preliminary plat will kind of suffice for the interests that we're seeing, um, probably we'll be coming in, you know, future date and, and continuing to, to preliminary plat the rest of, of this PAD. So, if there are any questions, um, the Commission, I'd be happy to answer and address those.
Any members of the Commission have a question for Mr. Mortensen? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, is any member of the public wish to speak on this, um, case? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, over here.
Yeah.
I just, uh, I just, it hasn't been mentioned, and in response to Commissioner Schlosser's earlier question, this PAD was principally designed to address the land use compatibility with Luke Air Force Base, and if you look, you can see the noise contour lines on the map, you can see the location of the APZ one as well as two, and each of these phases has particular development standards associated with them that are, were designed to conform to, uh, the land use standards for development within those areas, the high noise and the accident potential zones. So, uh, I just wanted to point that out, that this was, that was really actually the driving factor behind this PAD to be designed the way it was originally, and, uh, this proposal just merely adjusts the, uh, land use between the C-two and the I-one slightly, given the, seven acres is, maybe not considered really small, but it, in the context of this large piece, it is a relatively minor change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then I will close the public hearing and accept Commission action.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move we recommend Council approve case number one-two-dash-two-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, request for amendment to the Palm Valley three oh three planned area development.
I have a motion from Commissioner Williams?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hamilton, you've heard the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, you have recommended approval of case one-two-dash-two-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one. All right, uh, case number one-two-dash-five-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-three, uh, it's a request for approval for an extension of the preliminary plat for Las Palmas. I will open the public hearing, take staff presentation. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, uh, tonight we have an extension of the preliminary plat for Las Palmas. Uh, Las Palmas, the preliminary plat, it consists of, uh, two-hundred-seventy-three acres, uh, that's subdivided into four-hundred-seventy lots and two court home parcel. The location is north of Van Buren, south of Roosevelt, between Citrus and Perryville Roads. Surrounding Las Palmas is generally rural estate development within the county, with some portions of city to the east and to the south. Uh, zoning and initial preliminary plat were approved in November two thousand and With that approval, uh, with the preliminary plat approval, that is valid for one year with a six-month extension available. Uh, since that time, the preliminary plat expired in two thousand and ten after several extensions. Uh, the preliminary plat was resubmitted in July of two thousand and ten with a twenty-four month approval period, and with that approval was a stipulation that allowed the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a six-month extension if requested. And tonight, that is this action, a request for a six-month extension, which would take that approval to January twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. Uh, the applicant would like the additional time to continue working on their plans and to renegotiate their development agreement with the city. Uh, staff did not find any changes, uh, to our city codes or standards, or to the surrounding area that would prevent us from recommending approval of the extension request, as such, we are recommending approval. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, my presentation has concluded, uh, Mr. Kelly Hall on behalf of the applicant is available for any questions. Mr. Kelly Hall, on behalf of the applicant, is available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Steve. Does anyone have a question for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Schlosser.
You mentioned the, they were, I recall, they were here like two years ago, is that what it was, two years?
Yes, sir.
And under the current policy paragraph, it says something about the legal determination. I just, I guess my concern is, we've seen lots of these, I guess not lots, but these applicants having to come back, you know, over and over again, and now is it based on this legal determination, this six months, oh, we can grant them, or how does that work?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, yes, in the past, staff did administratively approve these, and we did administratively approve several extensions for multiple plats. Since that time, there was a legal determination, one extension is it, so this would be the final extension.
So, I guess the next question is, if six months go by, what happens then? Do they have to start over?
Yes, sir. A new preliminary plat application would be required.
I just, I don't understand what the, can you expand on the legal determination, or what? I don't understand why that, why that is, if nothing's changed, why applicants have to keep coming back? If we're just, it just doesn't seem efficient to me.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, that...
What's the rationale, I guess is the question?
The rationale was to have a set approval period was, as you mentioned, in case something changes with either standards, codes, or the area, you didn't want indefinite approval out there possibly. The subdivision code as written was open to interpretation in a sense, staff's interpretation at the time was multiple extensions could be provided, however, that was an open-ended, there was no end to the extensions. So, staff looked at it, the legal city attorney's office looked at it, and their read was, the subdivision regulations allowed one extension that had to be approved by the city council, and that was their determination, again, based on the fact that standards change, the area could change, you don't want an indefinite approval out there.
I understand that rationale, but it's still, it's stepping outside the box, it doesn't make, it just doesn't make sense to me, that he looks over it.
Mr. Schmitz has always a good, better explanation.
Again, I'm not being critical, but it just seems to me if nothing, if nothing significant changes, not that you have to give them a blank check, but to keep seeing, you know, these applicants have to keep coming back time and time again, until they're ready to actually do something, maybe this applicant is, I don't know. Just my perspective.
Chairman Lox, I, Chairman Schlosser, I don't think we're prepared to argue the point. I think we agree that the one year with a six-month extension that's in the current code is probably too restrictive and should be looked at. That's one of the things that we've talked about changing when we process a revision to the subdivision regulations. In this particular instance, the applicant asked for a two-year time limit with, and a six-month extension, which was granted by the city council, with the provision that the six-month extension could be authorized by the Planning and Zoning Commission without going back to the city council. But without specific action by the council in that direction, we have to live with the terms that are in the ordinance right now. So, that is something that we're going to consider revising. I think Mr. Crutchy explained it properly, as far as why you want to have some time limit on it, so that you don't keep extending and extending and extending and extending. And this, unfortunately, in this particular economic climate, there have been more and more of these than we probably would have seen ordinarily. And this one in particular is in the West Goodyear area, which is subject to the West Goodyear MOU, which is a consortium of developers that had development agreements with the city regarding how infrastructure would be provided to that portion of the city. And even within the context of those development agreements, things have changed, and they are in the process now of updating the studies, and we will be renegotiating the development agreements, and hopefully, by the time this six-month is up, we'll be in a better position to move forward with this project as well as others.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions for staff? All right, I'll take, thank you. The applicant wants to come up and maybe answer some questions, it seems like we're somewhat interested in hearing what's going to happen and when it's going to happen.
While the applicant's approaching, if there's any confusion on the case numbers, I believe what happened is, the original case was 10-500-2, this case is 12-500-3, just because it's the extension, so if you see...
So, it's 12?
12-500-3. So, if you see a discrepancy in the numbers, that's why, and we apologize.
Hopefully, I read, I read it off the agenda, so hopefully, it was the correct one. Okay. Dumb luck.
Chairman and commissioners, my name is Kelly Hall, I'm with PMC 16 Spur Circle in Scottsdale, and I'm filling in for Mr. Phil Miller, the applicant here tonight, who's on vacation, so I'll do my best to answer any questions you have, but I may not be able to answer all of them.
Well, I think the burning question is, I think the original, from what I recall, is, you know, was approved seven years ago, is that 2005?
Sounds about right.
Yeah, and so now, here we are, you know, multiple years later, and so, and yet, you know, we're still looking at a blank, you know, piece of ground, I mean, is it the development agreements, I suppose, that are limiting your ability to move forward, or are we still talking about the market that is the real detractor here? Or is it some sort of combination of the two?
Yeah, a combination of both, as you know, the West Goodyear region is, you know, lacking infrastructure, and for one project to come forward and kind of front the, it'll be the first one in, is quite a burden, especially in this market, it's just, you know, a combination of those factors.
Mr. Chairman, I might add to that, Mr. Hall is correct that it's really two things. First, it was the market, when it collapsed, it took the underpinnings out from under the development agreements. The development agreements had anticipated, the city was going to front the money for water and sewer infrastructure, and the developments were going to process through relatively rapidly, and prepay all the development fees, so that the debt that the city took on could be retired more quickly. Unfortunately, the market collapsed, the developers pulled back, understandably so, and the city, in the meantime now, has lost its ability to fund the improvements because of the diminishment in property values and assessed valuation. In addition, one other thing occurred during this time period, was the city adopted its IWMP, which is the Infrastructure Water Master Plan, Integrated Water Master Plan, which had some different flow rates for calculating sewer flows, which would have an impact, not only on the line sizing in the area, but also with respect to the capacity needed in the wastewater treatment plant. So, as these agreements started to expire, five of the developers who were kind of left standing, if you will, came forward and offered, well, at our request, they agreed to fund infrastructure update studies, so that we could incorporate the best information that we have now, and try to come up with some way to get the infrastructure developed for this part of Goodyear that is acceptable to both the city and the proponents. So, I feel comfortable in saying that it's not their fault, that they haven't broken ground. Happily, though, I can say that the market is coming back, they're all interested in getting positions so that they can move forward. How fast they move forward is going to be market-dependent, and then also dependent on how we are able to come up with a solution for the development agreement amendments.
Thank you, appreciate it, Joe.
I have a question. I wanted to know, do you have a user?
Not that I'm aware of at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hall? All right, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this case? All right, I will close the public hearing. Any other commission comments? I will just say in my comments, hopefully, that this will be the last time we're dealing with this piece of it, and the next time we see you, it will be with something a little more substantial. All right, with that, I will take commission action.
I move that the commission accept the recommendation to recommend to the council the passing of case number 12-500-0003, the extension of preliminary plat approval for Las Palmas.
Second.
You have a motion from Commissioner Short and a second from Commissioner Miller. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered, you have approved case 12-500-0003. All right, on to the last case of the evening. Case number 12-500-0004, I request to approve a preliminary plat for Estrella Gulf Village, parcel 5.3. With that, I will open the public hearing and take staff presentation. Katie?
Thank you, Chairman Lox and members of the commission. This is a request for a preliminary plat approval for Estrella Gulf Village, parcel 5.3, which is located along the east side of West Star Drive, located here, and it's south of San Miguel Drive. This preliminary plat proposes subdividing approximately 22 acres into 78 single-family residential lots and 14 tracts. The preliminary plat for Estrella Gulf Village, parcel 5.3, did come to the commission before in 2010, and it was approved by city council on June 28, 2010. Now, this one is a little different than the one you saw last month, in that a final plat was submitted for this parcel in September 2010. However, the final plat got held up because staff in Newland were negotiating an agreement, the Northern Solutions Water Agreement, to bring, to add water capacity to the area, and so, because we were doing those negotiations, we couldn't take the final plat forward, and it got delayed. That agreement was just approved in February 2012, and since then, the preliminary plat has expired. Since the preliminary plat was expired and it needed to come before you for approval, Newland has decided to make some revisions, since the housing market has changed in the last two years. Most of these changes are positive, they have reduced the total number of lots from 81 lots to 78 lots, and they... They've increased the lot size from an average of a 50-foot wide lot product to a 55-foot wide lot product. They have reduced the open space slightly from 7.6 acres to 6.9 acres, but that 6.9 acres still exceeds the minimum requirements for open space. They are providing two access points onto West Star Drive, and the preliminary plat does meet all the requirements of the city subdivision regulations, and so, staff does recommend that the commission forward a recommendation of approval. And that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer questions, and the applicant is also here and can answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Katie, does any commission member have questions? Like deja vu.
All over again.
All right, thank you, Katie. The applicant would like to come up and dazzle us with...
Good evening, Pete Tyke with Newland Real Estate Group, 590 North Fortia Street. Mr. Chairman and members, what we're doing is, we're actually getting interest in these parcels in the Gulf Village, so what we chose to do, based on the request of the builder, was increase the lot size, they'd like to increase the home size potentially, and so, that's what we're in the process of currently.
Any commission questions? I, for one, am glad, this seems to be a bucking of the recent trend in smaller homes, to now a little bit bigger, so that's some exciting news, I'm glad that there appears to be a builder, I presume, or a likely builder?
Likely, we're well into negotiations and reasonably comfortable that everything will move forward, we have a positive outlook, so we'll know in the next month or so.
All right, any other questions for the applicant or for staff? All right, is there any member of the public?
Thank you.
Who wishes to comment on this case? No, all right, I will close the public hearing and accept commission action unless we have any other comments. Okay.
Commissioner, I recommend that we, recommend approval of case number 12-500-0004.
Right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Hamilton?
A second, and I wish you very well. We're anxious to see you move forward.
Second from Commissioner Williams, you've heard the motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have recommended approval of case number 12-500-0004. All right, that concludes the new business staff communications.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, I had a couple quick items here for you. I wanted to thank all of you for, all of you who have completed graphics training for doing so, and remind those who haven't that we need to get that taken care of, so appreciate that. I also wanted to mention that at the last city council meeting, the council approved an amendment to the city code that basically eliminated the community development department and made it the development services department now, with the community development and economic development, and building safety divisions within that department. So, as you hear of that in the coming months, you'll be aware that we'll be representing the community development division of that department, and a solicitation for a director for that department went out at the end of last week, so we'll be seeing a new face at some point in the future. And lastly, the council also adopted, oh, wait, I have one other before I do this one, the rules that you recommended at the last commission meeting underwent another review by the legal department, and apparently, there are some hiccups, so you'll probably be seeing them again. Like you said, deja vu all over again, that'll be, that may be coming back, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then lastly, the council also approved the formation of the general plan committee, and adopted the public participation plan, and set up the bylaws for the committee, and I'm going to let Katie give you a rundown of that and the schedule and the highlights.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So, as Mr. Schmidt said, the general plan committee has been established, and we do have the application, which is available online, so anyone can apply online to be part of that committee now, and probably in mid-July is when we're really going to up our advertising of the committee, it's going to be an in-focus. The bad news is that Planning and Zoning Commission members cannot be part of the general plan committee as members. The reason being that that committee actually advises this body, they will be creating a draft plan and recommending to you that you review and approve that plan. Because of that, there was a concern there might be an open meeting viol- Because of that, there was a concern there might be an open meeting violation if a Planning and Zoning Commission member sat on a committee that advises the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, these are public meetings, so this does not prohibit you from attending meetings and participating, as any member of the public can participate in these meetings. We're also going to have a lot of citywide events, open house meetings, we're going to have a visioning workshop, and you are all encouraged to participate in those. Once the general plan gets started, we're also going to be bringing updates each month to you on the progress of that. And whenever we have substantial draft documents for you to review, we will be holding work sessions so that we can get your comments on those draft documents before the process gets too far along the line. So we are going to get you involved and keep you abreast of everything, but you won't be able to be a member of the committee.
Legal strikes again.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Is this planning group going to be given any kind of a vision or set of priorities for the city in the future, such as environmentally sound, or park space, or recreation facilities? Or is there any way that some vision for the city of the future gets communicated to this commission, or do they start over making up a new one?
Thank you, Chairman Lox, Commissioner Short. That's a great question. Their first charge is actually going to be creating that value and goal-setting and visioning. They're not going to be doing that by themselves, though. That's why we're going to be having open house meetings where the entire public can come to these open house meetings, and we can get their thoughts on what should our priorities be? What's the future of Goodyear look like? And then we're going to be taking that to a visioning workshop, kind of like a town hall, charrette, if anyone's been involved in a charrette. And that group, which again is open to the public, is going to kind of take that down and actually create a vision statement and value statements, whatever they think they need to get that across. And then that'll be given to the general plan committee, so then they can use that as they go forward. We, of course, do have the existing 2003 general plan, and that's going to be given to the committee to use as guidance. We've been doing the citizen surveys every two years. That information is going to be given to them as well. But really, they're going to be, I don't want to say creating a brand-new vision, but they are going to kind of start at this new place and see what the community feels like today.
I recall that we did have some of those discussions even way back in 2003 about incorporating those. And I'm fairly, unless my memory is faulty, Gary can correct me if I'm wrong, that we did sort of include that. But that was part and parcel to the job of the commission is to come up with that overriding vision on what the committee felt like the vision should be for the next, you know, foreseeable future. And so hopefully, you know, again, I don't think that anything would preclude any of us from, you know, sort of participating in those discussions and helping them, you know, develop. And I think that your, you know, your vision as far as that, you know, I think that's important to you, not to say it's not important to the rest of us, but I know that that's a driving force in your service, and so I would encourage you to participate and, you know, and share that. I think it would be valuable.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.